I'd like to bring the meeting to order, welcome everybody and ask that roll be called. Bluth, Bozeman?
Here.
Disharun?
Here.
Holshauser?
Here.
Humble's?
Here.
Ree, Zalyn?
Here.
Thank you, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I just wanted to announce to everybody Beth and Cheryl are not here tonight because they're taking their children to college, so they're sorry they had to miss. At this time, we'll move on to the public participation portion of the meeting and Dr. Dierman will begin by presenting the superintendent's report.
Alright, for your request, none at this time. We've had our new teacher orientation and those were this week and had a nice turnout for that and District Leadership Team had our first full meeting, I think we had about 25 or 26 people in the room, got that done as well and then opening institute is scheduled and lined out and ready to roll for next week, so I think we're as ready as humanly possible at this point. Just a few other things, I've been at this for 15 years now and it's been on the news every night that I've seen this week, the teacher shortage and you know, that is not just a Peoria District 150 or Southern Illinois or a Chicago thing, that's hitting everyone. In 15 years, I've never seen it like this, this is the worst I've seen it and unfortunately, I don't see it getting better anytime soon. Scott put out some data via an email a while ago about the number of students that are coming out with the teaching credentials and how those have drastically declined and then you put some of the restrictions that are in place through legislation, it's just not a real favorable market right now for teaching, so I feel for our admin team and for Heather especially trying to round up bodies that, you know, you open the cupboards and they're bare, it just isn't there. So I got on the line, just did a little research and this is Central Illinois data, so this isn't, this is home. One of the questions, describe the current situation with the teacher shortage and in Central Illinois, 58% said it was minor and 30% said it was serious, so you combine those, that's 88% are feeling it. Describe the number of qualified applicants to five years ago, again, Central Illinois data, 89% said significantly fewer, 10% said somewhat fewer, so 99%, so basically 100% everyone is saying the applicant pool shrink and again, that is Central Illinois data. So you know, that is very concerning to us and we're doing the best we can and I'll let Heather report on staffing and those things later on, but we're doing what we can, but the cards were dealt, so I commend Heather and the admin team in trying to get positions filled in a market that makes it difficult to do so. Another information item that was asked about was the investments and we had talked about that as a board before and I was given the charge to look into that and start formulating a plan, so I've done that, I've met with, can you get my paper here, individuals from Charles Schwab, Commerce, Fortress Bank, Bank of Farmington, Edwards Jones, Unland Wealth Solutions and Chapin Davis Investments. Basically just trying to get a feel of what their ideas are or suggestions are for investments. There seems to be a pretty common theme, there's what's called the Cedars Program, CEDARS, I've been investing in that for six years in my former district, so I'm very familiar with it, it's running about 2%, maybe a hair less and then Treasury Bonds, there's kind of a sweet spot about that three-month investment. If you go out to a year, three months is running a little over two, a year is running about 2.5, so even if you want a year, you're only gaining 50 basis points and you're tying your money up for a year. Plus, if you read our board policy, it restricts us to 330 days is the longest we can invest something, so that's not even an option anyway, not that I would recommend it. So our next discussion will have to be, who do we want to work with and Damon had training today with Charles Schwab and I haven't had a chance to talk to him because it was pretty much all day today, so we're still gathering that information, just letting the board know that the ball is moving, it's rolling forward, we didn't, I didn't feel like we had enough information at this point to put together even an informational item. So next month, we'll have an informational item for you, we'll have a discussion about who we want to go with and things of this nature. I can tell you two firms that we cannot go with that I spoke of, Chapin Davis, his name, Thomas Jester, there's some history with the board with him and he made very clear, he was just there to give advice and his thoughts on things and he doesn't even want to be part of the conversation for the business. So he's out and then Bank of Farmington is out because the president of the Bank of Farmington is my brother-in-law, so he's out. So that's where that's at, so those two will be out and then Damon and I will have conversations and I'll get more information to you next month for informational items. So that's all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. This time, we'll move on to the public comments, is there anyone who wishes to address the board, if so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, this will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to action items. The bid results for the DVMS expansion project are included in the board packet, are there any questions? Okay.
Pete, you want to just give us an update, please?
Everything's rolling along really, really well, project is ahead of schedule and it's, after the three bid packages, we concluded all of our bidding, we are 147, almost $148,000 under, our bids came in $150,000 better than what we budgeted. There's highs and there's lows and you'll see them, especially in this package here, okay, but there's reasons for this as well. There was, when we counted the lockers, I failed to bring two pods forward, that's the bust in that. The floor tile, the flooring, there was no hard surface tile in the budget documents, but there is in the final documents. Those are probably the two that will make up that difference, which is fine because those are finished, that's what people are going to see more than anything, but the long story short is, with the 150 under budget from all the bids, that's added to the contingency that we thought we would be taking from if we were not, you know, if we were not within budget. So the project contingency was 333, $333,000, so we're sitting on $480,000 of project contingency. All of the areas of concern are behind us, okay? We are doing very well with the masonry and the concrete, the concrete work will be done come Friday, all of the slabs on grade will be poured, we've moved from the east wall of the gym to the west wall and we'll have the east wall of the gym entry done for school next Thursday, that is the bus route. We've got that all worked out with Jason Holmes where the part of the parking lot will be stripped, the bus lanes will be stripped, so we're doing, we're concentrating a lot on children's safety, community safety, et cetera, et cetera, because there are winged dishes, you just can't put a fence around this whole site and every 10 minutes have a guard at the gate and so on and so forth, so things are working out really well, we should be finished with this project in June, we should probably finish with the interior project by, I would say, early May. So if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask and other than that, well, I just, there's actually labor shortages right now because there's a whole lot of work going on, but contractors we have on this job, they're very, very well regarded in the community and they know the importance of our project, so thank you and that's it.
Anybody have any questions?
Just the one, the second paragraph, you said there was one alternate for removing or replacing the carpet, did you decide on that or?
Well, that's not my decision, I think it could be, it will be your decision, it's not something we have to act on tonight and I would advise that you watch the school, okay? If you wanted my opinion, I would give it to you, if that's what you're seeking.
Yeah.
Okay, I would tell you that it's 10 years old, it looks great and I would tell you if I was an architect, I would be begging you because it will then match up with all the new stuff we're putting in and see the resource area opens up to the other resource, you know, that's kind of the gathering space, so you're having, it's just like, and these are not the colors, but they certainly work well, but it'd be like going from that carpet to this carpet, this being new, that being existing and so I think they're using different color schemes, probably in the same color range, but just different pattern schemes. That's all I could tell you at the moment and I'm not taking anything away, I, you know, I am a district member and I've been here forever, that'd be a tough $31,000 for me to really think through. Now, there's another item that I think will be coming up in the future that I would really promote.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And that's going to cost a few dollars, but some will do probably, they're in concept phase right now, we'll price it up and we'll get the foundations and steel ordered for it and it would be done by the time the school is finished as well and have it probably along the south end of the building, so the kids have somewhere to protect themselves when it's raining or snowing and waiting for a riot and all the other schools seem to have, all the newer ones.
So it's, when you're looking at the schools to the right?
You're looking at the schools to the right.
Okay.
Tracking the buses, man.
Okay. Okay, thank you, any other questions? Okay.
Thanks again, we'll see you next month.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the bids.
Make a motion to approve the bids. The bid package three for the DVMS expansion project has presented.
Sir, a second?
I'll serve her.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Brian Zalyn, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humble's? Zalyn?
Hi.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That concludes this portion of the action items, the board will now move on to the information discussion items. The school activity account reports are included in the board packet, are there any questions? Okay, Mr. Adrian, we're going to delay that a little bit, we're going to delay item B until the person is able to be here to present on robotics. Ben King, our Director of Technology, has an update regarding the district website, welcome.
Well, so the district website, I know you guys had moved towards that last November-ish, I think was the timeframe for that. I came on in February, obviously, we've turned over the whole department in the last six months, we've had a lot to do, a lot to get things going, basically learn all the different systems that this district has, so we have made a lot, a ton of progress on the website. We have done something, but it is an enormous project because not only are you transferring data from one site to the other, you're also redesigning each of these pages and it's not just one, there's a whole 800 of them, so it is an enormous project, we are still working on it, we were working on it this week, it is still going to come, it's still going to happen, but that's basically what the scope of it is. We're also going to need to get some other players involved just to make sure that we're all looking in the same direction, getting the information out there that we want the public to see, so.
And what, again, is the company we're using to design that?
It's called Final Site.
Okay, that's right.
That's the name of it.
Okay, any other questions?
So will you be able to put together a timeline as far as where you think, six months, a year, in a couple of months or something like that, you can put the timeline?
I think once we pass the first couple of weeks of school here, we can really dig into it and we'll have a much better idea of how long it's going to take, right now, I would be hesitant to tell you.
No, I'm not asking for now, but if maybe the next month or so, you could say, you know, in 12 months, we'll be able to run it, here's our points to hit and we're shooting for each.
We actually have meetings with Final Site as well to start getting those back in order and get some goals that are achievable in a certain amount of time, so yes, we should have a much better idea of that.
Okay, good.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. I appreciate it. Information regarding the CSCI contract is included in the board packet, Mrs. Bowman is here to present information regarding the contract.
Sure, so the CSCI, this will be the third year we'll have given this survey, it aligns with our balance scorecard and so this is an item that we've brought out for the last three years and so it's really just a re-upping of that contact. There were a couple of areas, if you recall from last month, and we did have to add that, add a few customizations just to make sure that we're getting all the data that we want for our balance scorecard. The other piece we really talked about is, right now, they do a great job of compiling the individual building reports, but the consolidated district report has required a lot of consolidating on our end, so that is something that they have added to that for us so that can be done, so we have the data we need without having to compile the numbers on our end, so. Any questions on that, I know this is up for approval later in the meeting, that is simply due to timeline, we like to give this during parent-teacher conferences because that's when we have the most people in the buildings, not that everybody takes it at that time, but it's a great time for teachers, never going to rely on parents and hopefully get a good, high participation rate from it.
Are you going to, are you going to offer it on devices then, for the parents to be able to fill out the survey?
Correct.
Okay. After conference, great.
And sending an email.
Absolutely, both, yep, they can do it either way and then our staff always takes it on a Wednesday as well, we offer that time to them and not surprise staff.
How many questions?
Ooh, it is about 80, it is a little lengthy, it does take about 20 minutes to complete.
Okay, I didn't know that was some of the concern before?
Yes.
That it was long, so people weren't happy with that.
It is a little longer, so.
And let me ask you one last question, can you start it, if you started here while you're in the school, can you go back and complete it or no, is it stop and start?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
If we try and pare that down, not now because we're up against the wall, but maybe for next year, does that affect the amount of data that goes into the balance scorecard or?
It could.
That's a requirement?
Yeah, the other thing is, when we met with them to set things up, they like to ask, some of the questions seem a little redundant, but they feel that that gives you, yes, a better overall score, it's more accurate then because you're not just asking the question once, they're asking it in multiple ways to ensure that people are truly providing them with that.
And I guess the balance is, if you get less participation, is that worse than?
Right, I guess that's really how it's weighed.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Heather. The information regarding the district office lease is included in the board packet, are there any questions?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I know this topic has come up prior to my arrival and I appreciate the board holding off on a decision to do something maybe more permanent until after I had come in and Damon as well and given us the opportunity to get a lay of the land and maybe formulate a plan for ourselves, so I'll be honest, I don't like leasing, it's flushing money down the toilet in my opinion, but I also understand we need district office space at this point in time and we will certainly look to formulate a plan for the future that's a little more savvy with taxpayer dollars, in my opinion.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Information regarding the budget for FY19 is included in the packet, Mr. Hackett will present information to the board.
Just to remind everyone, at the June meeting, you did approve the tentative budget for FY19, this is just a little bit of information, a few changes that were made since that tentative budget, will it be presenting the final budget with a public hearing at the September board meeting, if there's any further changes, I'll let you know then. Just a couple of things, since you last approved the tentative budget, additions would have included increasing the medical insurance benefits, we did a 5% increase to offset those new costs that we'd be experiencing. We did add $50,000 to the summer projects budget in Fund 10, that is to accommodate the summer projects that you guys approved a few months ago, we needed to add a little bit more money there. I made the adjustment to the transportation revenue based on the state audit, to remind everyone, there was about a $350,000 payback that we're going to do to the state, we are going to be anticipating that we should be able to do that over two years, so I did go ahead and reduce the revenue by about $175,000 to accommodate that. And the last thing to inform you on that was a change since you last saw it, we added $17,000 to security, this is to accommodate for the second closures that we're doing at each school entrance. I was not sure that that money was currently in the budget, so we went ahead and I just wanted to make sure it's there just in case, when I'm looking at it, I'm not sure what all that represents yet since I wasn't part of it.
And what fund, what fund is that in?
Fund 80, the TORT fund.
Okay.
So those are the major changes since the last time you saw it.
I have a question about transportation, so I was thinking that we would have to reduce it by 450 because I thought we would get the same amount less next year, plus we'd have to pay back what we owed in two years, so I thought it'd be 300 plus half of 300.
What I've seen was the payback was the 350,000.
Oh, okay.
But I will certainly check and see, that's the information that was left.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Information regarding bond refunding is included in the packet, are there?
May opposed to getting, saving $1.3 million, please speak up.
Right.
Okay, information regarding the district's 2018-19 insurance rates for health, dental and vision are included in the packet, are there any questions?
So did the carriers change or no, or?
Let me get into it.
Okay.
Carrie, don't pull up.
Oh, sorry.
I can't read that, so. You received a rate sheet?
Yeah.
I've got it hard copy, but thank you. And I changed that one anyway, the top three fourths of it is the same as what you did, but then I got to thinking about today, what's the number one question that the employee is going to ask? How much does this cost? Blue Cross Blue Shield is who we're going with and I shared that with you last month, that was the decision of the group and it was the best decision, I mean, they were, they're the elephant in the room, I mean, and they came in and they CIE, we had four new members this, five new members this year, we're adding four more next year, which I'll touch more on that later, but I think they see the writing on the wall, that they maybe came in with a good deal for us to get in the business so that they can retain it. The district I was with, we were with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the last three years and in that time, I had zero employee complaints. People like Blue Cross Blue Shield, they provided a good product, a good price and the customer service is very good, but back to my point, what does it cost? So if you look up there, because it's not on your sheets, because I added this this afternoon, on the bottom, the employee only cost, so that's just single insurance, for 17, 18, if they take the complete package, the health, the dental and the vision is $75.83, that's what they paid, the employee paid last year. If you look at the new cost, it's $74.92. The health did go up, that is correct, about 5%, a little bit more, but every, the dental and the vision came down, which helped offset that increase, so basically you're looking at no increase. With that being said, employee spouse, I won't insult your intelligence, but you know, you're looking at a $5 increase, employee child coverage, a $3 increase and then for employee, the family insurance, $8. Those rates are locked for two years, so basically if you look at last year, this year and the next, you're basically looking virtually no increase for three years, that's pretty much unheard of, so that's a pretty good deal for us as a district and for our staff that take advantage of that. If you look at the rate increases over the years, Blue Cross Blue Shield in their own presentation that they gave to the Board of Directors of CIE, said that they averaged about five and a half increase, five and a half percent increase per year across all their plans. United Health is actually at 9% is what they said they've been averaging. If you look at CIE over the last, I think I had about 12 years, 10 to 12 years of data, they've averaged 3.2, actually 3.24% increase, so we've been getting good renewals from CIE and with this rate lock, when we start to figure that in, that number's only going to fall more. Some of the schools that are trying to get in, one that really intrigues me, Farmington's trying to get in, Peoria Heights, but the other one is Morton, Morton's looking to come in. We are a large player in the CIE just because of our size, we used to run about 25% of the group, that is no longer the case because they've added more schools. When Morton comes in, they're about our size as well, so that will, you know, give strength in numbers and so even if somebody does have a bad claims year or whatnot, we can balance those spikes out and hopefully have a little bit more of a flat line, so I'm very optimistic about the future as far as potential rate increases. I don't think this is a teaser rate, we'll lock you for two years, but in that third year, we're going to hit you with a 30%. I was with Blue Cross, Blue Cross Blue Shield for three years, I never saw an increase even close to that, nothing even in the double digits, nothing even close to, I don't think anything above 5.
And if they do, Mike and I will bid it out. We can always bid it, right?
Oh, sure, but we'll see and they'll bid it out anyway, that's what they do, but I'm just, I think it was a really good decision. One of the things that was brought to my attention was with the potential for self-funding, so I did some research on that as well and one of the arguments that I heard is that DOLAP has been carrying the load for the smaller schools that are in CIE, that we have really good claims and so since we have good claims, it pulls the rate down and these other schools, you know, that are smaller but have these larger claims, you know, we're covering their costs. So I met with Mike and Curtis earlier this week and shared my concern, I said, I want data to show if this is or is not true, so for this current claim year, the target by the insurance industry from what I was told is 85% is what they look at for your claims history and we ran at 93%. The group CIE as a whole ran at 90, so we were actually on the other end of this, we were above the smaller schools, so they, they did not carry the load, we did not carry the load for them, they may have helped us out a little bit by being in CIE. With that being said, some schools that did get in, Abingdon Avon came in, they left the Western Area Self-Insured Group that they were part of and they saved $370,000 in premium this year alone. Morton tried to get in, they didn't get in this year, but they'll get in next, but they went from self-insured to fully insured with United this year and they saved $800,000 over expected claims, when you're self-insured, you'll get expected claims and then there's like the worst-case scenario, but that's just off the expected claims. So with that being said, and when they come into us, they're going to save even more, I talked to Jeff Hill, who is their superintendent, he's looking at last year's costs, they were at 3.6 million when they were self-insured, he's predicting when they come into CIE, they're going to be closer to what we are, about 2 million, we are about 1.88 is what our health expenses were. So that's just some information as far as where we're at on the self-insurance and some of the data that I was able to gather from that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate, yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate you looking into that because I know we had, you know, we had a lot of interest in possibly going to self-insured and what was the best option for us, so you, from your investigation and talking to the experts, feel that we are in the right place to stay in that CIE?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I know, we spent a lot of time on that, as far as where we should be and if the rates were right and if we were being treated right in the group.
And I've got rates from other area schools that aren't in CIE that I can share with you to show that we are in a really good spot.
Good, thank you for doing that research.
Okay, Mr. Adrian, are you ready to go back?
Adrian?
Yeah, okay, we'll go back to that. Okay. We'll go to the robotics bootcamp presentation, Mr. Adrian is here with a student who has a presentation to share with the board.
Okay. You all know that I feel like I've got the greatest job in the world and because I get to see exceptional teachers, coaches, student athletes, student participants every day and I don't give a use to it, but every once in a while, something sticks out in my mind and this summer, this school, it never sleeps, I mean, whether it's the weekend, the holiday, the summer, it never sleeps and this summer was particularly exhilarating because we had this activity going on in the West Wing and all these little kids and they're all excited and I just kept being drawn out of that thing and I kept seeing kids with, working on code, working on software, working on mechanical, working on pulleys, working on motors and Renee here had the, she saw me like dump out and anyone explain what go on, but it was a robotics camp and I don't want to steal her, she's got a great presentation, a lot of information there, but if you, if you could see this and you had a kid that age, you would want your kid involved, it's what this whole high school embodies and we're doing it at a younger level and the best part for me was our students were modeling the behavior they would expect in that type of scenario and they were outstanding teachers, they were caring, they were kind, they were, they delivered their content perfectly and I couldn't be more proud and today, Senior Renee Davis is... And today, Senior Renee Davis, and she's gonna work through her presentation. You want to?
Pretty tough. Yeah.
Okay. So this summer, the robotics team put on a robotics boot camp. So our, you know, okay, we're gonna do some great stuff. What are we gonna do? Well, we aspire, but every year, there's two types of robotics competition. There's the regionals, then there's the world championship. Dirk has not been to a world championship in eleven years. We want to go real bad. This is a quote from when I am a member of Black Rapids, and it talks about, one of the coolest part of a first championship is that there's teams all over the world that you see all these great things, and tons of people there, and it was something you really wanted to experience. So, world championship, it's four days. In Detroit, Michigan, there is fifteen thousand students, which is part of the total of thirty thousand people that attended this, people from forty-three different countries. Then we hit a little roadblock, and there's a five thousand dollar entry fee. And we've gotta figure out how hard it'll be to get five thousand dollars in less than a year, and that's where our summer camp came from. So, we had to, we had less than four months, and we're gonna come up with this awesome stuff. We decided we're gonna have thirty students, who create each day to be of two hundred and fifty dollars, who can spend their money to study, to pray, to read, to learn about these programming and coding and mechanical-based skills, and electrical skills, and computer science, a whole bunch of great things. We were, we were a little late to begin with, knowing the virus, and we worried, but then we camped still for a week, and we had to, a lot of wait lists, people who were so excited to be there. So then, we had to create a camp. We advertised, we promised, we did a bit of negative reality, we wanted people to show up and be proud and excited about what we do. So we spent roughly forty, four thousand five hundred student hours writing lesson plans, and building and designing motor cars in these camps in the field, and creating a spare machine in the camps, you know, make our own frisbee or something, giveaway activity, and things like that. And it was a ton of work that all the students put in, and it was a student-led camp, so the students were writing the lesson plans, and the students were building these things, and they were coming up with ideas, because we had experience, we know, here's what we did as a kid, and so we know what those things are gonna do. So, we had, our camp was, there was two separate leagues, there was one to end for June and a camp for July. We had great results. Every day, there was thirty campers here, four through six graders. We had ten student volunteers who spent the whole day here, along with three Dirk members and one Dunlap teacher, Mrs. Brandt, who helped make sure everything was well and going well. And here's some of the feedback we got from the parents, we sat down at the service, hey, we wanted to learn, was this a good camp? What community improved? No, we got nothing. The parents were, oh my God, I can't tell, we were doing binary numbers all night. You gotta love it, hey, can I send it for next year? We've got parents saying, yes, I want another step camp, but this one, so much better. And we were really excited, because this is the first time we've done something like this, and we couldn't factor. So I just wanted to come here, kinda give a special thanks to the Dunlap administration that came for helping us set up student accounts, the Stodey Camp for helping us arrange rooms and things like that, and Mrs. Brandt, who spent so many hours to help us organize everything, along with us, the Dirk students, the members that made this a success.
Wow.
What I'd like to say about the camp that made it so special, and I'm so proud of them, they start, they saw a need, they set a goal, they gave our students and our community an opportunity they didn't have. I mean, they would've been home playing Fortnite, now that they've been wrong. But they gave them hands-on experience. What I think most impressive, like I said before, was they had a great mix of seat time, computers, you see the kids just glued on that computer, working on their, they're trying to figure out their problems, working out their side, they were collaborating. Then they would take a break for a snack, then they would go out, and they'd do the hands-on stuff with the motors and the trucks and stuff, and they were so engaged and working so well with the team, then they'd go outside, go over, he says, come back in. But like I said, it was so valuable, and I'm so excited that they started a tradition of learning throughout the year, that, you know, and like I said, we wish them the best, we hope that this works out with the national tournament, because it's an experience that they'll never, ever forget.
I'd like to say, my daughter attended the games, and she attended several camps this summer. This one, she's so excited, and after we came out there, it's been months, she just loved it, enjoyed it, it's very exciting, so thank you, and for all the volunteers who came over there. Excellent job. Welcome.
Yep, bravo. Thank you. Information regarding the Dunlap High School entryway project is included in the packet. Are there questions?
My way to say is, we were given some information about, there was a proposal, but it was not what the board wanted, it was much too large, so Tom was given the charge to come up with something smaller, and he has a proposal that we will be discussing with you later.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. This concludes the information discussion item segment of the meeting. We'll now move on to consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion regarding items on the consent agenda? Okay? Not, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Don Bozeman. Is there discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Humbles, aye.
Bozeman, aye.
Dishru, aye.
Holshouser, aye.
Zouin, aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We'll now move on to the action items. The bill list, treasurer's report, and district investment report are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve payment of bills?
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of two million eight hundred and six thousand eight hundred and five dollars and eighty cents, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Brian Zouin, seconded by Teresa Holshouser. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Zouin?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Dishru?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the appointment of the authorized agent for IMRF is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
I move to approve the appointment of the authorized agent for IMRF, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Brian Zouin. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Humbles?
Aye.
Zouin?
Aye.
Holshouser?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Dishru?
Aye.
Motion carries. Information regarding the contract for Pepsi Services is included in the board packet. Are there any questions?
I'll make some comments.
Okay.
If I may.
Sure.
This is something, this is something you've seen before, and I asked you to table that, because I wanted some time to look into it, and I haven't had time to do so with Mr. Hackett's help. I'll let Mr. Hackett speak to his efforts to try and get Coke to even talk to us, but with that being said, I got ahold of Galesburg, they just last month re-upped a five-year contract themselves with Pepsi, and spoke with them about what, and sent them our contracts, and they sent me theirs, and we compared, and they're comparable. And they did go through the complete bid process. Coke actually did come in and present to them, and they had a committee, and this is what came of that presentation with Coke. Pepsi was offering them five thousand dollars a year, plus the equipment, similar to what we have, rebates were very similar, five thousand dollars a year for five years, that was the meat and potatoes of the agreement. So you're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars. Plus, they dropped off, I wanna say like ten coolers, like those Gatorade coolers, those orange ones with the white mids, just dropped those off, a big thing of towels, and a big thing of water bottles, all for free, so here, if you need more, let us know, we'll get you more. Coke offered one year at five thousand dollars, and then two thousand dollars a year for equipment purchase. So if you wanted some coolers, you could buy them, but you had to buy them at full retail, or if you wanted some towels or some water bottles, you had to buy them at full retail out of that two thousand, and then anything over that, you had to pay for out of your own pocket. So it wasn't even close, it was a no-brainer for them. You're talking, for them, twenty thousand dollars. Our contract is at eight thousand a year for five years, so significantly more than what theirs is. So I just don't see how Coke would even compete, but I'll let Mr. Hackett speak on what he has done to try and get them to even talk to us.
Sure. Just to follow up, I went ahead and tried to get in contact with someone at Coke. It was a bit of a challenge, to say the least. Eventually, I got through about three different people, and I was explaining who we're a school, because I was pretty sure they had a standard way of doing this. After about the third person, I finally gave some information, and they said they would have somebody contact me, probably about three days later, after Dr. Bearman had already gotten out the information he had, I finally did get an email from someone, but after hearing this information, this certainly seemed like the way to go, and I was concerned about customer service, obviously, it was gonna take that long just to get a field representative to give this call.
The coolers, the capital outlay that we would have to put into this on the front end, because the coolers are provided by Pepsi, that's part of the agreement, well, if we pull out, they're taking their coolers back, so we're gonna have to replace all those. It's significant, and then you're looking at, and I talked to Katie about what our boosters can do as far as, you know, they get a delivery of Pepsi product, but they have three games, as she told me, in a week, and they run low on product, they'll run up to Sam to buy a case of Pepsi, and that's okay, we confirm that. And we are supposed to buy our product from the vendor, section 3B, someone, one of you pointed, I think it was Teresa pointed, I, you know, I had a little concern about that, and she's right, it's a legitimate concern, but I've been under contract with Pepsi and have run into that. Now, if we were going out and buying Coca-Cola products and bringing those in, it'd be more of a significant issue, or if we weren't buying as much of our bulk materials from them, it's not an issue. It's in a bind, and the boosters wanna get some Pepsi, they can do that, that's okay.
Okay.
I do have a question, though, about that, because I know booster organizations that do, because they can get a more competitive price outside of, directly from Pepsi. So, you know, I don't know if we can change the language, but I'd be hesitant to sign this based on the language in that contract for that purpose, because I know there are several booster organizations, and they do have a special event. It makes a difference to them whether or not they can, you know, purchase, it's their profits, basically, right? So is there any way that we could change that language, or work with them to change that language, that it doesn't say we shall purchase directly from them?
They won't change it. That's standard language in every contract I've seen in dealing with them.
But isn't the boosters a separate organization?
Correct.
So they're not really a part of this, are they?
I think it clearly states in here, boosters.
Yeah, it does. But it's, we are going to buy as much product as we can from them, because we do have a contract, but in those situations, we can make it work, and have in the past, that has happened, that has been past practice, and even when we're under a contract with them before, so that contract language was in there before, and we did it, I don't see that changing now.
Yeah, I guess my concern to what Teresa was saying is just that, and I understand what you're saying, is there, and I, maybe it wasn't done before, but is, can we at least make an attempt to change the language to say that if it was in a particular situation where we couldn't get it from them in time, and we had to have it for an athletic activity or an event, that we then would have, be able to go out? You know, just so that we're, there's some leeway in there, because to Teresa's point, just because we've gotten away with it in the past, doesn't mean that somebody doesn't just happen to be, come by, because it clearly states in here that they have the authority or the right to come and visit us at any time?
Yeah.
And come in and inspect anywhere on our property, so, I mean, it just, to me, to sign a contract for five years, saying that we're not gonna do this, knowing in our mind that we may go do this, that, you know, that's...
We can look into that, certainly, because Damon got confirmation today, because he was pushing them more, because there was a change in this contract from the last on the scholarship, correct, Mr. Hackett?
Correct.
The two thousand dollars was taken out, because our volume had decreased, probably because of these situations, from what it had been previously, so they, and the gentleman that he spoke to, correct me if I'm wrong, said he submitted a proposal to corporate to try and get that back in, and was waiting to hear. So this contract is not finalized at this point, so we can certainly look into that, and then also see if we get an answer on that two thousand dollars. Honestly, I don't think they'll go for it, but it doesn't hurt to try.
And maybe we could just have a communication to all the clubs and say, you need to make your best effort to get this through the legitimate...
My guess is, they're not gonna, it's not a huge big deal to have the language in there, because they're not gonna come in and inspect this. This is standard stuff, but...
Yeah, and then, two other things I was concerned with. One, twenty-five thousand dollar more contract should be bid out. Should this be bid out? I mean, even if we know that it's not gonna yield, and we end up with this, for purposes of following our own process and procedures, should we have bid this out?
No, because the difference is, we're not paying them, they're paying us. It doesn't have to be put out to bid.
Even though it's over twenty-five thousand?
Correct. Double check that today.
Okay. So as long as you, you're good on that?
Yep.
Okay. And then the only other thing I was gonna say is just, and I know this is standard language, but man, has Jay Green looked at this at all, the attorney?
No.
Okay, because I would be comfortable with him taking a look at it, just because it's very much written in their favor, and I get it, they write it, right? So of course they're gonna write it in their favor, but, you know, this is five years, we're locked into this, and it clearly states that we agree, customer agrees that Pepsi should have the right to change the commission rate and/or its formula method for calculating commissions at any time, in a reasonable discretion, provided that such commission rate or formula adjustment shall not result in material change to commissions due with respect to the same sales of products. You know, I'm just, to me, it just seems like there's nothing there for us to hold on to. Like, every give is in their favor, right? So we signed this today, and it's a five-year contract, and they come back and say, well, you know what, we're changing it from eight thousand to five thousand, which they, which what Galesburg is at, and we're locked in. So can this language be in our favor a little bit?
We can certainly check.
Just heard that.
They're not, they're probably not gonna change it, but...
We can try.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just to put it out there, let them know that we're pushing against that, right? They've already reduced us by two thousand dollars per year, and I know you're working on that, and I really appreciate you pushing to get that back, but I mean, next year, it could be six thousand if we don't say anything, right? If we don't push back a little bit. And I still think it's worth it to try to get that language to, it fits to what we are doing. You know, we shouldn't have to dance around it, we're agreeing to this for five years, let's try to make it favorable to us as a district.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I would not want to send this to Jay Green for spending that money, that's my personal opinion. If he can just work on the language comfortably, I don't think it's worth sending it out to our district.
I do think it's worth it, it's a five-year contract that we're gonna pay for, and he looks at things much smaller than this on a regular basis, that board members feel is important, so unless there are three other people that object, I think we absolutely should have Jay Green look at this and any other contract that's gonna potentially cost this district money.
What is your recommendation on that?
I don't think it's gonna hurt, I mean, I think Jay's probably seen this a million times, and it wouldn't be probably more than an hour charge of that, so, being the length of the contract, being locked in for five years, is probably not a bad idea. And just with the caveat when I talk, don't spend three days on this thing, give it the once-over, and a general impression of what you think.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will not, we will move to table? Or just...
Excuse me, can I interject?
Sure.
If we really need Jay Green to look at a Pepsi contract, can we wait until we get the final? Because I don't wanna, you know, give him this one, and talk, put on a sink, go back and forth, because it's just gonna make the bill higher.
Why don't we do this, let Dana and I work on it, and then, once we get it finalized, we'll make a determination whether or not we need to move forward.
Okay. And would you like us to act on it, or just not act on it?
There's really no reason to act on it at this point?
Okay.
Because it's not gonna get signed anyway.
Okay.
I mean, we have the coolers and stuff, so it's not like we're not going to have product.
Okay.
We're going to miss out on some rebates and stuff, because we're not in a contract, but we'll have, so that's what we're going to do.
Right.
I mean, we need a motion to table.
Yeah, we should have a motion to table.
So you, you wanted to table it, you don't want to vote on it tonight, I guess is what I'm saying?
We don't have a final contract.
Right, we don't have it.
Well, there is a contract.
There is the contract, right here.
But it's not the final, you're going to.
I mean, I would, I'm willing to vote on yes on this tonight, but. It's not going to get any worse, it's just, will they kick in the two thousand, will we not?
And your preference is for us to wait or move forward on it tonight?
Honestly, I don't think it's going to change, but go ahead and table it, I want to see if we can't get something in writing about the use of product by boosters.
Okay, so is there a motion to table the contract with bottling company LLC as presented?
I make a motion to table the contract with the bottling group LLC as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Don Bozeman, seconded by Teresa Holzhouser. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Bozeman, aye.
Holzhouser, aye.
Humbles, aye.
Disharou, aye.
Zouin.
No.
Okay, motion carries. This concludes the action items portion of the meeting. The board will now move into closed session. Could I have a motion to adjourn to closed session, please? Have a motion to adjourn to closed session for the.
Following purposes, as stated in the meetings act, you apply to employ and compensation specific employees, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully close, lawfully close, security procedures, collective negotiating matters, and litigation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Don Bozeman. Is there any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Humbles, aye.
Bozeman, aye.
Disharou, aye.
Holzhouser, aye.
Zouin.
Aye.
And motion carries. We are adjourned to closed session. Motion to approve the closed session minutes. Of the board meeting.
Of the board meeting of July eighteen.